Public comment. Seeing none. We're gonna move the agenda around a little bit and bring up the bus route request first. Anybody have a problem with that?
I can speak to this, Madam Chair, if you'd like.
Please.
So at the last meeting, we had the request to add a stop on an existing bus route. The Board had requested that I find out from Tim Eldridge, our Transportation Coordinator, basically more information regarding the concern about students not being able to eat breakfast on that specific route. They're getting here right around the time that they would be going to their first block, as well as what would potential additional costs be incurred in by the district. So I do have that information from Tim Eldridge. I'll read you what his response was. Says to make the timing work in the morning, said he would need to adjust three routes with shifting students from one bus to another, and it would add approximately four to nine minutes among those three buses. Says the approximate extra cost is based on a full year at $1,051. He says the afternoon run, students would be on the bus until the last drop off, which would be approximately 4:10 to 4:15. And I asked for more of a breakdown on what that $1,051 additional cost would be. And it's basically approximately eight miles extra per day at 73 cents per mile at $5.84 per day, which gives you that breakdown of $1,051. So basically, he's saying in order to make the timing work in the morning, you'd have to shift three buses and add additional minutes to their run on those three buses. And the additional cost was $1,051 approximately. So that's the information.
For the total year?
For the full year.
Mark.
And the parents, the concerned parents, they offered to offset that cost?
Yes, they did.
Bonnie.
Regrettably, I think I need to play devil's advocate a little bit here. I have a concern that we already have students that attend out of school, out of district schools such as Kingswood, that we do not provide transportation for. And those are our students here in the district already. And while these are children in the district, I also have a concern that if we set a precedent doing this one particular daycare and offering bus service, what happens if we have another facility open up that has students that come to Paul School just over the Brookfield line or just over the Osiphe line or just over the East Wakefield line going towards Effingham? I'm concerned that we might be setting a precedence that we might not be prepared to handle if it came up. And although I feel the need for a quality daycare is one of the most important things that a family needs when their children are young, I guess I'm worried about setting that precedence and having many more requests come.
Somebody stated that there was no opening of any daycare at all in Wakefield, but I heard there was some openings in the other daycares also, so.
Yes?
I personally called anonymously to the other daycares, asking if they could provide care for my three, I only have two, but my three school-aged children before and after school. Pine River said absolutely not, and there was a waiting list. Wakefield told me that they may be able to do it, but they weren't sure. Now, we're not talking about three kids, we're talking about at least 13 this year and more next year and more after that. And if I can also address the previous comment about another daycare center opening up, I can assure you that won't happen because there isn't space. So unless somebody wants to build some new construction somewhere, it's not a possibility. We've looked everywhere. So the spaces that a new daycare could occupy don't exist. And precedent has been set by our neighboring school district already, Nosiphe. Osiphe buses kids from JJ's Playland, a small selection of kids from Effingham to school in Osiphe. And I confirmed that with their Transportation Department just this afternoon.
Any other comments, guys? Anybody want to make a motion?
Did you check the old SAU building down in Union?
I did. Their rents are so small and where the bathrooms are placed are where it's on a slab. And the cost of the rent that they would want for that place would not be, it wouldn't work. It wouldn't work for licensing alone, just because there's no kitchen and where the bathrooms are set, they're not classroom accessible. I tried that, I tried above Lino's, bathrooms are public, they're outside the classroom, there's no kitchen. I tried a, let's see, try?
A couple of homes.
A couple of homes, again. There's, I've tried, tried everywhere.
I also just want to comment that it's, I can understand where you might not want new centers opening and worrying about this transportation, but this is a current center that's in the community and it's a short notice. This is a, it's not like, okay, we knew for a year this was going to be happening and these are things that could be planned for and prepared for. This is a school in need right now that is maybe not something, maybe it's not something we need for three years, but it's something we need currently. So maybe it's not a permanent solution, but maybe this could be some sort of a temporary solution for a certain number, like a certain timeframe.
And we thrive on being part of the community. We're the only ones that do Pride Day. We're the only ones that do the breakfast with Santa. Our center is committed to this community. We want to stay part of the Wakefield community.
And Tara's goal in the long run is, please correct me if I'm wrong, but is to move the center back into Wakefield as soon as she's able to find space for it. This might be a six-month or one-year commitment versus it being, okay, this is a permanent new bus route that might be required.
Tara, have you considered having an in-home daycare in your own home?
My house is tiny.
Well, I'm just saying, because when I had my in-home daycare, it was in the cellar, it had everything, but it was very accessible to parents and the community.
I live in East Wakefield, Bello Lake area. I live in a three-bedroom ranch and we have three, four children, another one on the way. My oldest is 20, he's already in the basement.
Okay.
I would do it, and it's 1,500 square feet, I wouldn't get licensed for it.
No, and I'm just thinking of spaces, like have, you're looking to get something at a low rent, you're not looking to purchase a piece of property?
At this point, I cannot purchase.
Okay.
In the future, that's what our goal is, to purchase property and put a building.
We've been, we're a nonprofit through a church right now, and we're losing our housing from the church. So Tara hasn't been stocking away money to buy a piece of property. The goal is to potentially move into this place, which is a low enough rent that we could put money away toward a future rent, or for a future purchase, pardon me. We just haven't had that yet. This has been a nonprofit through a church, and we're now homeless right now, and we're needing your help. That's where we're at right now.
Yeah. We're not looking for a permanent bus route. What we're looking for is, I guess, help at this point. This can be our home for the end of this year, hopefully next year, and from then, I'm going to be starting a new nonprofit, just because this one's gone. And going from there, saving, 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 and hopefully within, but, you know, I'd like to say, having some help.
Do you have an idea of your minimum square footage needed?
You need 40 square feet per child. We're licensed for 36 children currently.
That's 12,000 square.
And you need 40 square feet of outdoor space per child. Fenced.
So that's 12,000 square feet in a building, right?
What was that?
At least 12,000 square feet in a building. Two bathrooms?
At least four rooms for different age groups, a bathroom in each classroom, space for changing tables, has to be totally separate, sink, and you need a kitchen that is used for only group operation. Licensing is crazy.
Insurance.
Yeah. Well, licensing good state in New Hampshire, childcare licensing.
So Mr. Tursey, so instead of moving the buses around, is it possible to have a spare bus and hire a driver to do that extra route for them? My concern, if we move all the routes around and have kids lose their morning breakfast time and stuff like that, I mean, that's gonna, I mean, those parents might get mad and say that they don't want that. So is it possible to have a spare bus that we have, you know, for maybe the short time that they need it for and hire a driver and they pick up the cost of all that? Is that possible?
I could look into it.
Not change anything?
I'll talk in my head if we have a spare bus and what that number of spare buses might be, is it two? So.
I mean, just hire a driver that they think?
Four. It's too smalls and too big.
Too small and too large. So it's something I can look into.
I mean, that may be the way to go, not changing any routes and...
That would be a substantial cost, I know that, because the cost of a bus driver. So basically, the daycare would probably pick up that full tab of the running the bus and the bus driver.
I personally don't think it's fair to change the routes around and have kids lose their, you know, the morning breakfast and stuff like that. What if they don't want to do that?
But if you'd like me to look into that cost, I will for you.
I'll wait for my comments.
I thought the point of moving the routes around was so that they were not going to eat breakfast.
I'm sorry, say that again.
At the beginning of the meeting, you said to accommodate all the children to be on time for breakfast, they would have to change the route around.
Correct. So they're gonna get dressed up?
That's already been addressed.
They're not missing breakfast.
So they won't miss anything, you're saying?
No, that in order to make sure that all students are making it to breakfast, they have to shift three buses, moving students from bus to bus, which is an adjustment to those three routes.
Rob.
Do you have a budget line where a maximum amount that you could spend on transportation? I mean, do you have an idea where you'd max your lines out?
The families are willing to pick up any additional cost to the district. I mean, what we were told was there was a half-empty bus going in that direction already, and that adding a stop would not be an impact to the children on the route or the bottom line, because we'll pick up the difference in cost.
Within reason, I mean, I don't know what, you know, like tuition's gonna go up $500 a week, no, that's not gonna happen for our family, but.
Did Tim say why he would need to shift so many students? Three bus routes seems like a lot to shift. Is it that the bus that we were currently going to potentially use was overloaded with kids, so we couldn't fit all kids on it, or?
Well, without Tim here, I couldn't even speak to that. He did look into it for us as we requested, and he gave us the, what he would consider the best solution, so everybody would be here on time and everybody would have breakfast and the kids would still get bussed. So Tim's not here to speak to that, and I'm not comfortable speaking to what Tim looked into.
Right now, they do send an extra bus out, so I'm assuming that's one of the three.
Again, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the bus routes, and he's not here, so we're not going to speak to what he actually does. And I don't know that anybody on this board knows what the actual bus routes are in the morning or in the afternoon, so.
Do our kids have their own bus right now?
In the afternoon.
In the afternoon, but we share a bus in the morning?
With the Wakefield Childcare Center, in the afternoon. We share a bus in the morning.
But it's a bus that only does a quick trip out and back? It's not like you could go down?
Right.
And each classroom needs a bathroom? Do you have a two-bathroom facility, boy and girl?
If there was like two classrooms where there's a bathroom in the middle, that could work. You have to have a bathroom for every 20 students, there must be 20 people in there.
The bathroom has to be adjoining the building, it can't leave the classroom and go out to be able to use the bathroom.
Okay.
I'd just like to speak to the fear of setting, not being prepared if other facilities came to you and being prepared, you know, if there was a precedent set, I think you would be just as prepared as you are tonight. Now, if it comes up again, you are prepared. You're prepared tonight, you'll be prepared again if it comes up.
One last comment?
One last comment.
I would just like to really ask all of you for a fair vote. There's been a lot of, I want to say, unnecessary public influence over the past two weeks on Facebook regarding this subject. And there's a certain website on Facebook, a group in Facebook, that's been discussing this topic for two weeks. And I know that there's at least one board member on that forum who's publicly commenting on it. There are people in this room that are not on the Board who seem to think they're on the Board, to try to influence people based on emotion and facts that are not true. So there are facts in this proposal. The fact is, we're asking for a temporary adjustment in bus schedules and routes so that we can continue to care for 35 kids in this community, because if we close, that's gone. And there is not adequate access to daycare in this town without St. John's here. Another fact is that this is not 1982, and 80% of households, based on statistics provided by the Labor Bureau of Statistics in August, 86% of households have two working parents. We're the majority, and we need help, and we need care for our kids before and after school. And this isn't an argument of stay-at-home parents versus working parents. This is a temporary solution, and I'm just asking, please, just look at the facts and help us.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, one more question.
What's the potential of Milton parents wanting to join there in Milton? I mean, is there, are you maxing out your capacity now with just Wakefield students? Or is there gonna be?
I currently have Milton children at the center, here in Wakefield. Also, I have Brookfield parents, I've had Wolfboro, I've had Rochester.
I guess, okay, but my question is, is there room for more potential students that would probably be, or may likely come from Milton?
If we did move to the Milton Center and children wanted to join before and after school cares, if it wasn't filled with Wakefield students, then I would have to know the numbers. It would depend on how many.
But you don't feel as though you're near capacity there now? If you, if everything moves into the spot down there?
I currently have eight children on a waitlist, which I have not enrolled, so.
Does the state, do you think they're allowed for the new kids to join?
There could be some to grow.
I mean, it does seem like a fairly big building.
Yeah, and we'd be having the whole left wing.
Trying to find, figure out a building here in town, but just for a bit, just can't make the rooms and the bathrooms work out.
I know. That's why we would just, you'd either have to build or you'd have to buy and renovate, renovate.
Wayne Robbins has been working with us for quite a while, and I've been trying to help too.
We looked at so many houses.
Another question for Mr. Tursey. Any other options that we have, that we could change other than changing the bus routes around? Did he come up with any, did he come up with anything else, Mr. Eldridge?
Said that was his options.
And that wouldn't be an option that he'd be okay with?
No.
It's not?
Yes, Steve.
You have to remember, Bob, that when I just asked Superintendent Turris if he had it, that Mr. Eldridge did recommend that this shouldn't be done. So his recommendation is that we don't do this. I wish Mr. Superintendent had the letter with him so we could maybe narrow that a reason as to definitive why he's recommending against it, but it is the recommendation of our Transportation Coordinator, so.
So that's another reason why I asked if there's another option, with a spare bus, another avenue that way.
And I would be happy to explore all options.
If that was the case, and we could do that, that would kind of cover everything, you know, direct from what it is, to pick up and drop off. I personally would like to see if that is available.
As I said, I'd be happy to explore all options that we possibly think of.
Would you guys be okay with that?
If you guys are worried about certain precedents and everything else like that, for certain precedents, we've offered to pay the tab. I don't see what the hard decision is. No one's missing their breakfast, everyone's gonna be on school on time. We're taking up the tab, so we're setting a precedent for childcare A or B or C. They also will have to pay for their additional costs. I don't see what this is really a rational hard decision. If we don't have childcare, we are, we're gonna have to sell our house.
I've also talked to my husband about moving too, as well.
There's nowhere in town.
There's nowhere else in town. And I can say that I've been to another childcare center in town, my kids will not be going back there, so.
My comments still, another option of the bus.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
I know that we have smaller buses that handle, we have smaller buses that handle maybe one or two children. I don't know what the timeframe for getting those children in. Maybe it's extending that small bus to go out after they drop the child off, and maybe the daycare will have to sacrifice being here in time for breakfast, and the daycare can take over giving breakfast to the students so that if they're not there in time, and I don't want them late for school, but instead of reconfiguring all of the bus routes this year and maybe putting waves, maybe it's something that we can do, an alternative and where it is temporary. And although you say it's temporary, if the facility is amazing and you begin to thrive there, it may not be temporary, because if it just falls into place and everything is perfect, and you have to respect that, that it could possibly happen, that it could just be an amazing space and the kids are healthy, the business is thriving, and then it would have to be...
At that point, we would have the time to be able to buy a van.
That's what I, that's what I was saying, like, have you looked at that? Have you looked at purchasing or leasing a bus to transport your children already? Have you already looked into that and the cost of it?
It's astronomical, you've got the two CDL drivers plus insurance, it's incredibly expensive.
It is very crazy, and so I wanted to know if you've looked at all these avenues. I guess I would want to say, are there smaller buses that could accommodate? I'm sorry, you don't have to raise your hand, Madam Chair, no you don't.
They're telling us that there's a bus that takes the St. John's kids, as well as one of the other daycares. Is that just dedicated?
Just in the afternoon.
Okay, and in the morning, they're mixed with other children?
Yes.
So, again, why couldn't just Eldridge look at that? I mean, we're already doing it, so can we take a look at, a look at what he's doing and just changing it up a little bit?
I think the reason, and I can explain that, because I follow the bus.
Oh, okay.
I think what it does is it gets here, it gets here earlier, and it goes and it drops off, and then it swings right back and it does a long route.
Oh, okay.
So to go all the way out to the facility and back would be a full route.
Right, right. So do we want some more information before we move forward with this, or?
Yeah.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I think if we have two small buses that are sitting idle, and the school's willing, the daycare's willing to pay the cost of operating that bus, I think we should make it available. And I would make a motion to accommodate the daycare that services our town's children so long as the daycare is able to cover the cost of operating that bus.
Do we know what that cost is, Mr. Tursey? Okay.
Well, it would be, I mean, the daycare would have to agree to be able to cover the cost.
Obviously, we don't want to hit them with this huge bill that they can't afford to pay either, I'd really like to be able to give them an actual cost.
Well, there's already a cost, though, that would come up.
That's, I think, in falling of moving the bus routes around.
Right.
That's not, that's a whole separate issue.
I'm gonna second Ralph's motion for discussion. I guess I would feel like if they're willing to pay for the driver, the time, the gas, and we have something available, I would really like to be able to offer it to them.
Certainly. Yes, Mr. Brown?
We don't know, what do we, we don't know whether we have any available driver to handle that at the morning hour and the afternoon hour. I think we'd need to know if there was a driver available, if there's a driver, if there is not a driver available, are we gonna have to hire a driver?
Right, we need all those, that information.
And then if we have, if we hire a driver, that might be difficult, because there may not be enough hours to entice someone to come to drive just for those. So I think we need some more information.
We do need some more information, Mr. Tursey. And I'm really sorry, guys, but we want to put all our ducks in a row before we can give you a final answer. It's not fair to you.
Well, we don't want you guys to have a huge cost either.
We really appreciate not just giving a blanket no and actually trying to help us find solutions. I appreciate that very much.
Ralph?
I was just curious about volunteer driver with a CDL, how that would work in the morning? I don't know.
We can.
Yeah, we have to move.
I don't know about the other.
You have to have a bus, you have to be a licensed bus driver, you can have a CDL, but you also have to have that bus endorsement.
Seven days.
Okay.
I fail to see how that's easier than asking the regular bus driver to go 1.8 miles to pick up the Wakefield kids, a whole separate bus, a separate driver, separate insurance. I mean, that's just, just seems astronomical. We're asking the Wakefield buses to pick up the Wakefield kids, who have Wakefield kids, 1.8 miles. I mean, that's what we're asking, and the $1,000 seems rather reasonable to me. And it's, we're asking them to move five minutes out of their way, that's one stop. I mean, that seems very reasonable, $1,000, three buses, one stop each, and in return, they're not gonna have to make a second trip, am I right?
I get what you're saying, but they're saying there's gonna be, move three buses around to make this happen.
Right.
And I don't understand that.
Yeah, that's not logical.
Right, so I don't understand that, so that's the information I need to understand why they have to move three to have that same bus that's being used now to just do that loop.
So if you can get us the information, Mr. Tursey? Oh, that's right. I rescind my second. Second on Ralph's motion.
You didn't.
I just rescinded, she rescinded. I just want all the information, I want to do what's best for the students and the parents.
I want the information till we're asked for.
All right, motion fails. Mr. Tursey, if you can get us all that information that we're requesting?
Happy to.
And we will go over it. And if you could have Mr. Eldridge at the next meeting, that would be awesome.
Will do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for delay.
May reports.
You want to go back to your business, number six?
Oh, you do have to go to your business, sorry, guys.
We got an item on you.
Okay, Cafe Services couldn't be here tonight. There was an issue, so we're gonna put that off, and Mr. Tursey's gonna reschedule that for us.
For the next meeting.
For the next meeting. Warren articles.